Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Welcome everyone. To the City of Dexter City Council Meeting on Monday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And students from Wylie, if you would help us in leading us in the pledge of belief that we're all going to stand and appreciate it, we will start us off. Glad to talk very much.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Bonnie, I didn't mean to pick away your lead at all, but it's probably wrong.
Okay.
Uh, long call, please.
Alda?
Yes.
Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle?
President.
Schla?
Here.
Sunny Carol?
Here.
You?
Here.
Eden?
Here.
Um, we were just asked.
Yes, I'm sure she did enough by it. Adam C is approval of our meeting minutes. Um, we have a work session on April tenth. The regular meeting on April tenth. And a special city council meeting to do those manager, city manager review on April fourteenth.
I'm sure.
Um, I heard. Sorry. There you go.
David, any comments on that?
Uh, on page ten, under my council comment.
It's done.
On the fourth line. I would like it to say instead of R Y norms are important, to read. R Y adhering to norms is now important.
One more.
For the council, how? Anyone else? Zach?
Uh, on page eight of one forty two.
They gave her enough words, too.
Can I recall my note to correctly, it was a firefighter they're choosing, and it required fighters get to choose who they represented. Whoever led it by, it seemed like it's a large group that wants to help. Um, and then on page eleven of one forty two. Uh. We're only able to enter a closed section for personnel review that's requested specifically by the personnel being evaluated. Um.
Rachel, interlock.
Then that that needs to be documented.
Good luck. Then that's been my point. There are accordance in. Thank you for coming. Any other council council amendments? Okay, please go over to agree with us.
Alda?
Yes.
Hubbard? Michelle?
Yes.
Schla?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Sunny Carol?
Yes.
You?
Yes. motion carries. Thank you. We have, um. Two free range participation there this evening and, um, I have a feeling multiple of them may go a little longer than ten minutes. Um, so I'd like to start with the Wiley Elementary students. And, uh, Kylie Benson?
Yeah.
Here, I'll let you introduce the town.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kylie Benson. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Wiley and here with some of my students along with. Some of the students from the New Poises third grade class and Dead Diverse fourth grade class. And our students have been working really, really hard researching Arbor Day and different, um, native trees in Michigan. And we're so proud of them and really kind of be here, um, all the work we've been doing. So to start us off, we have Neat and Shroud.
Hi, I'm Neat and I'm Shroud. What is Arbor Day and why do we celebrate it? We celebrate the holiday Arbor Day because we celebrate everything that the trees do for us. Also, we will be giving out tree trees. Now, we will be telling you about the research we did. We did a lot of big research on these projects. We watched the video about Arbor Day. And we wrote what we learned and we researched paper birch, white pine, red pine, black gum, and tamarack trees. We are so glad to be a part of this. We are so excited to share our information with you.
What you need to know before planting trees. At Eleanor and Millie.
Hello, city council.
I'm Eleanor.
And I'm Millie. Today we'll be showing you what we learned about what we need to know before planting trees. We learned about paper birch, black gum, American larch, white pine, and the red pine, but we aren't giving away any red pine. First, we learned about how deep the hole should be. We also learned about how trees people plant should not be close to anyone. Another thing we learned is about the type of soil you should use for each tree, so it grows better. We also learned about the best season to plant new trees. We also, we learned about what the age of the tree should be. The average age of the tree depends on if you treat it right. Next, we learned to protect the environment by providing protection for animals and give us action to do. We learned stuff that you shouldn't do, too. We learned you shouldn't pick its needles and leaves or needles. The leaves and needles are very important to the tree. Something else we learned is not planting the tree right next to another tree. We also learned that we should not spare them with pesticides. Thank you for listening to our work. We hope you learned the plan to work on planting new trees.
Hello, city council. I'm here to talk about our girls. At first, our girls were split into three classrooms, Eva, Benson, and Weiss. Eva was doing white pine, Benson was doing tamarack, and Weiss was doing paper birch. I know we're just kids, but you can trust our research. We've done so much work and I can see all of our progress. People that have done the research or sound hardworking are determined to show all of the adults what we have been working on. The groups we have were divided so everyone was doing work and everyone had a job. They also came up with expectations to make sure they're correct and interesting facts. That's a complete my presentation. Our research is very hard, so we hope everyone learns from it. Thank you.
Canvas and presentation boards.
Five hundred.
And. Today we are here to talk about the next step with the two is Canvas working post to post and, um, post awards in Canvas files. First, we made a small schedule of what our poster board looks like. Then we either wrote it by hand or did it with Google Doc. If you did it with Google Doc, you would get it printed. And if you wanted to write it by hand, you started with the rest of the word. Then we put the pictures on, then we follow on with it when we post it.
So the other group of people who used a website called Canvas were one of the creations we learned. The Canvas, people in Canvas about grade three, that they continued that, which we had trouble printing in college, then we finally got them. Then we did the next step, which I'm going to tell you about.
Hi, and generally those who are very happy to be here. I'm here to teach about how we have to research new trees. At first, we thought we were only doing tamarack, paper birch, and red pine. But then red pine became white pine because I know no one couldn't buy red pine, so it's Eva's group researching white pine. Because Eva's, Ms. Benson's group, because Black Gum, and my group, Mrs. Weiss's group. Was getting ready to come to the city council meetings for the work of the community. Now I am finished. Thank you, guys. We're going to go to the meeting.
Hi, I'm Avery.
And I'm Kayla. And we are third graders at Wiley Elementary. On Wednesday, April fifth, twenty twenty three, Nazonio came to Wiley Elementary to talk about how we can spread the word out to the people in Dexter that are currently Arbor Day. So we went to Mrs. Eva's classroom to talk about that. First, we got surprised and figured out that we have to research more slash new trees. Then we thought about other places we could distribute trees to the people in Dexter. So we broke up into small groups and got maps of the city of Dexter. Then we thought about other things we could use to spread the word out. Our top idea was Google Docs. We thought about other ideas, but we decided not to use them.
While we were sharing the idea of Google Docs to Mrs. Weiss, the other people in our group thought of making announcements. Then the next day, we start helping all of this out for you. And every day with this, we typed, 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 typed. Now, we need to tell you one last thing. Thank you so much for letting us come to city council today. We are very grateful we got to do this because not many people get to. So thank you very much. Have a great rest of your night.
My last one's here from your support.
So, thank you. What was the website that you said you used?
Uh, Canvas.
How do you spell that?
C A N V A.
C A N V A. Thank you. I will look at that. So these are the words you did.
Yeah.
Did everybody get an A?
Yeah. He's the boss.
Now that's on the right.
We are going to be joining, um, the community to give out trees in different parts of the project, so we're really excited. All of our classes. Will be, um, going to the different tree handing out places and. We wanted to make sure that people know what kind of tree they're getting when they plant it, so that the community wide decision for their home. And so these guys are going to be there and help community members decide which tree would be best for their yard.
And where are those places?
Um, we have. The Dexter. The Dexter Library, Flushing, well, the good demo.
Well, thanks for all your good work.
Thank you so much.
I always say this, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the.
I know we've got some, yeah, we're going to collect these super fast. These are going to be. Where we get them.
Hey, that's, uh, is David London, uh, regarding the Sloan Kingsley project. Welcome.
Thank you.
Come back to follow.
You got that? Uh, boy, that was great. Uh. Hello. Sorry. Friend. Um. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to brief you on some future plans regarding what's happening and as the Sloan Kingsley project. I will introduce not David London, a people or council before, but many of you are new since I was here. Um, I'm a forty two year resident of the school district, a forty two year resident of Syo Township, both my sons K twelve through Dexter. My wife taught twenty years in the Dexter system as an art teaching. I was a member of the committee that launched the Dexter Community Fund. And professionally, I was, uh, with the Reinhardt real estate firm locally. For forty five years, the last twenty, which I was the owner of the company. I have, uh, been part of the Sloan Kingsley. Project for about five years. I've been the controlling owner for the last three. And had a number of discussions with staff and council, um, and Syo Township's board of this land is in Syo Township. Uh. Most of those discussions related to fairly high density and in one case quite high density residential development. Uh, today, that here, and and there were reasons for that. As the broker at Reinhardt. I am keenly aware of, uh, what's happened to affordability in our county and in. The Dexter community, uh, in particular as a nearby resident. Uh, I was trying to develop some workforce housing. And, uh, some, uh, additional, uh. Let's say below median price housing, specifically aimed at first time buyers and senior citizens, um, fixed incomes. Also trying to get more one level living into the housing stock. For a variety of reasons, those high density plans are not growing forward. I'm here to present, uh, as part of a global plan for the two hundred and thirty seven acres that. Make up Sloan Kingsley. Um. With a new plan involves a much lower residential density. And more land kind of the age and although there is all spin and conservation component. As well as continued agricultural use. There are three distinct parts to the plan and there's three and four in Canada, who's the. There's a one pager and then, uh, a map. Going to, uh. What what this will look like. Uh, I appeared on the thirteenth of April in part of the, uh, Land Preservation Commission Syo Township. Uh, I'm here with you tonight and tomorrow I will read the Syo board on this plan. Um, and as you may have read in your pink packet, today I delivered to Michelle Anio. Uh, a, uh, formal letter requesting an annexation by Dexter of forty five of the two hundred and thirty seven acres. That make up Sloan Kingsley. Said we have three distinct parts. Uh, I think what this project will do is, uh. Create certainty after roughly twenty years of different proposals of this property. Because we can create certainty for both municipalities. My role over the cap, which is here, is to move each of the three component parts. Forward. One of those is the annexation that we are requesting Dexter to make. Uh. The, uh, easiest, I think, of the three parcels. Described on the map, you have a package, is the conservation. Packet, that would be the green colored portion of the map. The majority of that is mature woods, speaking on the east side of Baker. Mature woods and wetlands, parcel of, I believe, seventy five or eighty acres of, uh, of woods. There is, uh, a, uh, part of it that would be under agriculture that is even, uh. Recommended for pathway, which could link into the Dexter system. Could link into the nature preserve on the west side of Baker Road. So, uh, conservation, um, is not your whole area. Eighty seven acres of the property would be utilized by a nonprofit to establish a campus. And a residential within. Center. For mentally disabled adults and. Think autism and some other conditions. Adults who need permanent, faulty supervision care. Uh, what's proposed is approximately a hundred residents. Thirty two of which would be people afflicted with the developmentally disabled, the conditions. Uh, the director of the group is here tonight and named Perry Fakian. And we have a purpose agreement in place with her organization for this eighty seven acres. Uh, she will be, uh, speaking first Saturday in May at the Dexter Forum. I know that she would be willing to come back and talk further about what it is they're trying to, uh. Build. Um, the Sloan Kingsley parcel. This would also be, uh, the east side of Baker Road. Uh. The. Third component of, uh. The two hundred and thirty seven is forty five acres of residential development. This is immediately to the spout of Dexter Crossing subdivision. We're looking to do seventy to seventy five single family. Uh, home sites, uh, and I would assume that the housing would be similar to what already exists in Dexter Crossing. Um. This is not as affordable as some of the housing that I wanted to build in the high density plans. But, uh, there is a need for solid middle class housing and that's the way that I would describe it, the Dexter Crossing. Um, I will not be building the homes on approval completion of the annexation. I will be selling the property to a qualified home builder to build out the, uh, seventy or seventy five lines. I think we, uh. We've tried hard to, uh, come up with something that will work for the community and try to, where I am on time. Uh, two more, two more minutes. Thank you.
The home.
The, uh. There's a list in your packet of perceived benefits that we have identified. I think, uh, the, uh, formalization and the conservation of the land, important. Interest has been expressed for more than a decade in conserving, uh, what's there. I want to speak for just a second about the west side of Baker Road, approximately twenty one acres that's there. There is a Syo preserve on both ends of that parcel, north and south. This parcel was not purchased by Syo. Ten years or so ago. Because there is arsenic contamination in it. Our intention would be to mitigate the arsenic. And then, so Syo was interested in it, but not without mitigation of the arsenic from events. Which we recognize that we have. Again, we think, uh, this property, a conservative project, can be tied into a number of different, uh, potential trail systems. One of the things that the nonprofit Many Hands is their. Brand name intends to do is to keep more than half the land in agricultural use. And, uh, has even said that they would consider talking with Syo about a conservation easement on the agricultural portion. Of their, uh, their land. That's not in writing or a done deal, but there's an open attitude about that. And I think interest exists on the side of Syo. Uh, I was trying when I was proposing high density development to meet a social need, uh. More housing and more affordable housing. Uh, instead, I'm now pitching. Many hands and with the social community that they will meet, I have been. Almost amazed since going under contract with them and talking to different. Community people about how many families have a situation where this panic fear is going to be required. And what happens when the parents of these now adult children pass on? Or, uh. This would be a solution for an awful lot of people who've been lost from county. Um, and lastly, for Dexter, the obvious benefits of adding seventy or seventy five homes to your housing stock. I'm told that. Believe from the mayor is that there is capacity in the sewer system. Who would want to be hooking up to Dexter City and water and, uh. Obviously, the roads and that our property line coming out of Dexter Crossing, there are roads that extend to the end there. I assume your planners figured there would be more housing at the end of those roads, so we would just be continuing with, uh, daily roads. So increased tax base, increased population, more schoolchildren. I have spoken with superintendent Timis, who told me the school system is down, more than two hundred students this year. Uh, and part of that is COVID related, but some more students into the district, which. This development would do it with the. I will not talk in. We have my one pager, you have the map. I'm happy to answer any question. Thank you, Alan.
Does anybody else have a question? Do you still have that this time? Or do you just want to be honest with your own plan?
There's a one quick question, um. Related to the site plan as currently or whatever you would call it. Is there a road connectivity between the many hand aspect and, uh. The residential aspect of that crosses that land preservation?
No, the intent is that ingress, ingress for the residential development will come through Dexter Crossing. And access to, uh, the Many Hands property would be off of Baker Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for presenting the, uh, information tonight and, uh, keeping us up to date on what's going on. It's been very old. I'm available. I'll be in touch in a few days. Okay, so that concludes our free range participation portion of our agenda. We are down to not arrange participation. Uh, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to ask a question. There's a brief beginning of the meeting. Um. If you'd like to read the meeting, press the port of the podium, state your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes.
True. Thanks so much, Maren. My name is Jessica Flintoff. I have the pleasure of serving as the clerk of Syo Township. I live on North Bimer Road, Syo Township. Um, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to speak today about this Sloan Kingsley annexation proposal. I appreciate getting a copy of the letter. Um, we just learned about it right now. I believe it's an important point of fact. That it was just last week or so that six of the seven board trustees members learned about this annexation proposal. And I came here tonight to tell you that because the treasurer, myself, the clerk, all four trustees. The township manager just learned about it just over a week ago. Prior to this, the board had heard a presentation from Mr. London in July of twenty twenty two. Um, he had proposed the prior plan that he referenced, and he asked if Syo would enter into a four twenty five agreement. The board responded with a preliminary mix of opposition, skepticism, and questions. Since then, the board heard nothing about this property until last week, when it bubbled up through an advisory meeting. Syo Township's relationship with the city of Dexter is very important, so that's why I'm here tonight to share this information with you. And as you know, we, the Syo Board, have a duty to administer the township to the best of our ability for the benefit of our residents and our taxpayers. So in order for the township to best serve our residents, I would ask that the city council. Engage in a good faith discussion about this topic directly with the board of trustees. No one board member has been authorized from the township of Syo to represent the township in these matters. Tomorrow night at our meeting, I'll encourage our board to appoint one or two members to serve as Syo's reps. Uh, so that we can begin discussing this annexation proposal to the city of Dexter. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the meeting. Appreciate it very much. Good evening. All right.
Good. Um, so my name's Barbara Veat and I live at Seven Mile into Ulrich Street in Dexter. Um, so. Uh, how much time do I have?
Five minutes. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I just wanted to, I was listening, this was news to me as well, and I was interested in it. And so, um. I would say that, uh, just to comment on that, your successful management of the city of Dexter has led to increased property values. Which leads to increased taxes for, for the city management. Um, which increases the services available to members of the community who live here, which increases the desirability. Uh, and then again, increases property values. So, um, I appreciate that. I think that's your job to improve the lives of the residents. Who elected you to add to our investment in the community. So, um, anyway. Uh, as a, as a homeowner, a property owner in Dexter. As a homeowner, a property owner in Dexter, I appreciate that values have gone up since we moved here twenty years ago, but that's kind of expected, and as our homeowner, that's a that's a good thing, and you get more taxes out of that. So the other topic that I wanted to speak on is that I know when I was on the school board, sometimes people would hear things in the community, and they get upset, and maybe they don't even necessarily have their facts right, and they'll come in and talk to us, and so I may not have my facts correct here, but I just, based on what I heard in the community, and then I looked over the packet to get a better understanding of what was going on, I did have some thoughts, and if it's not accurate, and I don't know what I'm talking about, then great, then there's nothing to worry about. What I had heard or kind of worded is that you might be planning to discipline or otherwise sanction a couple of city council members, and that I just wanted to share with you kind of the optics or some of the you know, how that's perceived by people in the community. Again, I don't know what, I couldn't tell from the agenda what exactly was going to happen with changing committees and things. But it seems to me that if, you know, if you had two city council members who came to meetings unprepared, refused to vote, regularly interrupted and yelled at people, maybe kind of something else a little bit, or like repeatedly make motions that are just frivolous to, you know, to bog things up. Well, then, it would make sense maybe to, as a city council, have some sanctions or some, you know, some encouragement to, for better behavior in the city council room. That seems to me that there are two city council members who perhaps are engaged privately in private behavior as private citizens that the city council may not be thrilled with, you know, may feel, have feelings, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that was just they have feelings about that. And so then, maybe disloyalty is discussed, or, you know, failing to follow some norms. Again, I haven't come to city council meetings for a really long time, so I'm not sure, but what exactly would be the, you know, the reasoning behind kind of disciplining or sanctioning a couple of the city council members? But it seems like using, you know, your position and authority as city council and mayor to, as a government action, to take what could be perceived as retaliatory actions against two council members for private actions on their own private time, participating in government as private citizens, is not good luck and probably isn't a great idea. So, you know, as city council members, you don't like something that's going on, or as a mayor, city council, you have avenues that are open to you as private citizens, it might be, you know, writing a letter to the editor, creating a petition, you could even gossip at the Dexter forum, I mean, there's plenty of ways as a private citizen that you can, you know, kind of get your message out. When I was on the Dexter School Board, they did actions like this, I would say fairly regularly, where I remember Dick Lindsey told me I wasn't allowed to take notes at my own meeting. I said at the time, I will quote myself, I said, "That's baloney." And he said, "Well, okay, you can take notes, but you can't share them with anybody." Well, then I had to start my notes from the school board meeting on social media because, you know, that's just a silly thing to say to somebody. I know Julie Shoemaker told me I wasn't allowed to write letters to the editor, I mean, as a private citizen. That is definitely how it works, and so I would just caution you to be careful crossing the line between your city council and your mayor duties, and the, you know, the things that take place on behalf of government, and the things that happen private citizens on their own time, yourselves and, you know, and others, and so I did, you know, I kind of I kind of phrased this online, I was like, what would you, what would you call it if, you know, if a government entity sort of retaliated or changed committee assignments based on things they didn't like that were private actions? And I'll just tell you, I didn't, I didn't put words out, but the words I got back were tyranny, retaliation, petty, insecure, and corruption. So it's just really not a good look to do that, I hope that's not what you're planning to do. And then, I guess, I've kind of probably almost stopped, but I do want to say that, you know, I have some feelings about the changing location of the fire station, and I feel like, I mean, we all know that there was, there were different options, and there were community meetings, and I attended one of those at the library. And it's also not a great look to kind of wait until Mr. Cousins passes away and the city fire chief retires to take down the sign and, you know. I know the language of the ballot, but it feels like basically it was switched on the community based on one single vote at a city council meeting, so I think it should be a community vote. I think there's a good chance that the community would decide that the current location is great, and you should update it. They may decide that they like the other property upon that review, but that's really, it's a huge decision, it's a huge endeavor. Yeah, on our services that we receive, and I think having it hinge on one vote at city council, I also don't think that's a great idea. So let's see if there's any left thing. But I think that's it, so anyway, thank you for your time, and thank you for your service, and I do appreciate the well management and this, we love living here, and we appreciate what you do in the community.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Hello. My name is Kathleen Brandt, I'm a SIO resident, I live on Rose Land Drive.
What was your preference?
Kathleen.
Kathleen, sorry, thank you.
Last name is Brandt, B-Y-A-N-T. First, I want to say, this is a really nice community, I really enjoyed the kids' presentation. I come to Dexter a lot for restaurant services, I really enjoy Dexter. I'm here today because I want to comment on the proposal that was just presented that Dexter should annex some of SIO's property. So I just want to give a history on this, that Mr. Lutton came to decide. Well, first of all, I'm very active in SIO Township affairs. You may have heard of some of our problems, three years of late audits, state audits, other problems. I started a group called SIO Physically Concerned Citizens, and we're trying to do oversight on how things happen in SIO Township, especially things related to financial records. So I've been at most of these meetings that I know that has got, actually I've been at all of them. July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Lutton came to the SIO board meeting, and he presented a proposal about engaging in a four-twenty-five agreement. He stated his benefits, his reasons. There was, the SIO board asked plenty of questions, there was recap of the history of that property and some of the reasons it hadn't currently, hadn't already been developed. And the SIO board said they would consider the proposal. And then, last Thursday, at our land preservation commission, I first heard about this proposal that was being submitted to you, that you unilaterally annexed this property. That's the first time I heard of it, as you've heard from Flintoff today, that's the first time six out of seven of our trustees had heard about this. So I just started doing some research, I looked at your meeting minutes, and I find out that the SIO supervisor has been meeting clandestinely with the mayor on this very project multiple times, with Mr. Lutton, with Barry Lannick, who happens to be a consultant on land preservation to SIO Township. So this is very disturbing that our supervisor does things behind her back, this is not the first time he's done this, he does this a lot. I wanted to let you know that, first of all, Barry Lannick is not a legal representative at first SIO Township. This should have been proposed jointly. Unfortunately, our supervisor, Mr. Hathaway, is not an honorable person. He does lots of things with developers privately, and then the residents and the trustees find out about it. And sometimes it's after the fact that the horse is out of the pasture, so to say. And I urge you not to just take some feedback from him that this is something SIO wants to do, I don't know what SIO wants to do. We obviously like to preserve land, but at what cost? And that's something that our entire board should be discussing and allow citizen input, there are a number of us that provide input at every, every other board meeting. So I'm here to give you some of that background. I'm going to ask that any further action on this, that you contact the entire SIO board with any thoughts, ideas, directions regarding this proposal. It seems drastically to me that a developer goes behind the citizens' back in our entire, in most of our board to put together a proposal, he bought agricultural land. He bought a piece of property that is zoned for agriculture, he took a risk if he doesn't want to do agriculture there. So why should any government alleviate him from that risk and say, "Fine, you can develop that, you bought ag land, keep it as ag land, I'm sure SIO would be interested in making an offer to preserve the land." Thank you so much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Kathleen, just want you to know that all of those meetings I made very public as a part of my mayor's report, each and every time.
I
there was no convulsions out of anything, so.
I understand that, unfortunately, we didn't get it back from our own representative. That's where I got the information, so.
No problem.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gillian Carey, I am the SIO Township trustee, and I am here regarding the Lutton proposal. I have been very involved in SIO for about five, six years now, and I ran for office, and it was a special election back in November, and I won. So I'm a down-to-earth type person, and I don't want to say no to anything, I don't want to say yes to anything either, without being fully educated. And also, I got involved because I wanted to see a different type of community. I was tired of the backdoor, the quiet, the, you know, not, the lack of transparency and whatnot. And when this was brought up to me, because of the LPC meeting, somebody, it was a resident that said, "Hey, you need to listen to this," and I kind of blew it off, but then I ended up watching it, and I was like, "What? Why is this developer going to the land preservation commission and not the board?" Now, I know back in July, I believe it was July twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, that he did come in front of the board, I wasn't on the board yet, but I still sat in and listened to everything. So, and, you know, I understand this predicament, there's a, this is an interesting parcel, but now that we have something in front of us, I wanted to look more into the details, and going back, SIO and Dexter has a long history regarding annexation different parts, parcels of land, and I think that for the most part, I know we've had issues, don't bring up the fire department. Okay, well, anyways, I did, so I want to create a community where we can work together. And hopefully we can do that, even if this doesn't go anywhere, or maybe it does, but that we sit down together as a council and a board and work together. So with that said, I would really like to, you know, for us to create something in the future, near future with this. And just to reiterate, the LPC, the Land Preservation Committee, is just a committee, they are an advisory committee to the board. We need to be fully informed before we take action, and they, they don't have the authority to do anything. So I look forward to working with you, and hopefully we can create a good situation here. Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening?
Yes, I'd like an unscheduled minute.
You're welcome, yeah, fine.
I dispute this allegation that these meetings were clandestine and being hybrid. We have made an application through a program that has existed for twenty years in SIO Township plus-minus, back in either August or September, and this was a follow-up to that application. I am fearing that SIO Township tomorrow night, the whole world is learning since the thirteenth of April, when I met with the Land Preservation Commission. Now, here it is, what, eleven days later, and twelve days tomorrow, and I'm briefing the SIO board. We will work through all the organized systems that we need to, you don't have anything to hide. This plan that I've described for you tonight has literally come together in the last hundred and twenty days, and we're now ready to talk about it. One other comment I will make in terms of the economics, today, the parcel of land that we're talking about for annexation has a total tax bill for about twenty thousand dollars a year. Of that, I haven't calculated SIO's portion, but they received a dedicated SIO Township tax, but it is much less than twenty thousand, I'm certain that it is less than five thousand dollars a year. So the economics for SIO are not a dominant factor here. The need for water and sewer is the reason for the annexation request and adding some housing for Dexter. I am not at war with SIO, I have been there for forty-two years, way country. We have had some real political dislocation in the last two or three years, and a lot of allegations being made. I have met with Will Hathaway, the consulting engineer, multiple times over the last twenty-four to thirty-six months. Some of those meetings, two of those meetings, the mayor was involved in. We're not hiding things, we're trying to be creative. And this annexation piece is an extremely logical piece to get developed into housing within the city of Dexter. I'll leave it there, thank you for listening. SIO's plan to be a recipe, I recommend.
Thank you.
Hi. This is Emma, nineteen sixty Baker Road, so I am one of the properties that will be relatively immediately affected by this plan. And this is the least bad plan that has come across in the ten-plus years we've been there. Obviously, this has been in limbo for a very long time. The land preservation aspect is great. My backyard will largely remain the same. Cool, all for it. And I also recognize that there is a need that Many Hands is going to fill. I looked through the website, it seems great, it seems like a utopia. If something is too good, be true, oftentimes it is, that being it's not there yet. My biggest concern is there's a lot of funds needed for Many Hands to get this off the ground. If for some reason those funds were not able to be met, what happens to that parcel? Does it stay agricultural, is it now agricultural residential? Can it be sold again to build more houses or what have you? And I recognize that that's not your problem, that's SIO's problem. But it seems to me that this doesn't go through unless all three pieces go through. So that's some bits to consider, we'll be at the SIO meeting tomorrow to see what has to be said. But this property has been there for a long time, nothing has happened. Mr. Lutton would like to get out of it, it seems. And if you have the capacity to bring on these new houses, then seems like everyone can walk away fairly happy. So that's my piece, some immediate residents in the area seem to be on board, we'll see what happens when Many Hands does indeed have a proposal. But it seems like a not bad option to take. Thank you.
Allison, how do you spell your last name?
S-U-M-G-I-Y-A-N-A, you know, the usual way.
Thank you, I just didn't catch up, appreciate it. And you say nineteen seventy Baker?
Yes.
Thanks for coming today.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Okay, we have quite a few people online. Do you have a hand?
I do have a hand from Elthorpe.
Okay, can you unmute, please? Or?
Okay, I think I'm, am I on now?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me. This is actually regarding the location of the fire station and I guess it builds a little bit on Barbara Reed's comments. I'm sorry, I didn't give you my address. Yeah, Lisa Phillips.
Thanks, Lisa.
3360 Edison.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I read in the mayor's report that he wants to discuss the potential charter amendment that appears to be circulating. I'll tell you that it is circulating. I'm circulating that petition. And I feel quite strongly about it that the location is not optimal downtown. There are, there is, are 10 negative influences and seven positives for the Maeve or Mav, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, location, one negative and 16 positives. After speaking with many residents circulating this petition, they were very surprised to learn the location would not be at Meadowview. So as Barbara said, I think this should be a decision for all of the voters. This should be on the ballot. We should decide, not seven council members. It's a lot of money. The bond was voted in, so we're, you know, we're stuck with that now. I feel people didn't read it closely enough to see that there was still a choice. It hadn't been decided. I think that's it. I appreciate you listening to my comments.
You're welcome. Thanks for taking time to attend me. We have none of hands, Josh. Can you help me?
I have no other hands.
Is there anyone online which you could speak of? So please raise your hand.
I have no other hands.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Okay, I think that concludes the not random participation portion of the agenda. So we'll move down to item S. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest to declare? If none, we'll move on to item G, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
So. Move by all decks, confirm. Any vote? Any discussion?
I would move to review the agenda, striking M3 and M4.
There are a motion to amend the motion?
Yes, I will move to amend the motion to review the agenda by sending it to strike M3, consideration of organizational matters with the residents, and M4, consideration of assigning adversaries upon our resident's provision.
Okay, there's a second for that. Motion to amend. See, no second? We're back to the original motion to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Wait.
Yeah, so I guess my motivation for speaking to amend that is that there, those are two consideration items that so that I can tell sufficient information to properly notice the council as to what it is we're being asked to consider under M3 and M4. And I know just a couple of meetings ago, I think we were awaiting details on proposals from OHM and so it showed up as a consideration item, but we were notified, hey, if we don't care back in time, you know, to provide that information, we'll go ahead and strike it from the agenda so that not be considered. I, I still do not know what we're being asked to consider for M3 and M4.
So under M3, there's a couple of things I'd like to point out. One, we need to add to the organizational matters, the subcommittee that we approved at the last meeting, the one. And then I would like to have a discussion on this term maybe a little bit under my agenda. I'd like to better understand what that is, how it's being put out there, what the potential impact is that anybody might understand. I'd love to do that together. Okay? I do think that it's important that when council members are representing this body on boards and commissions, that they're representing the interest that council is presenting. One, they have an opinion. Nobody's suggesting that you can't have an opinion. It's another to actively work against something that council has decided in an active format. And I'm not clear, there's been two meetings now where the meetings have ended with council member comments that have not been clarified at the following meeting. So I'm going, I'm taking it under my report to talk about that. I asked some questions about that. But everybody just stopped, let me know what you know. Because I appreciate being included in what's going on a little bit and how it might benefit our community. And under M4, my understanding, we only have one more meeting to decide any changes to the resolution that might be needed before that's finalized for bond resolution. Is that correct? So today's the last meeting to do that. Otherwise, final reading from the schedule. I think I need to put the schedule back in there because we've talked about this two weeks ago. But it might make sense for us to clarify where we tend to spend that money. So I would like to leave that discussion and get your thoughts. And I've been on town all week. That's the best I could do is get them on the agenda. Okay, and I'm happy to, again, have a discussion in the pod. And if there's potential action on either one of them, great. But I do, I do for sure think that they have a subcommittee to the organizational matters. I don't have a minimum. So. Yes.
Isn't there some guidance? I mean, my understanding is then you had specific actions in mind, those specific actions that have not still, I guess, been shared with the community. So it's not clear to me that those items have been properly noticed and can be accepted on the agenda without sort of a supermodel.
No, they can be. The potential is to clarify the, where we want to spend money. What properties we build, what's better than money? We have, it's not a new topic. It's come up briefly before. We haven't made any decision on it. Or anything. And anybody have any questions on it? And being honest, I think with the bond resolution, oddly assigned from the property versus, I don't know, making improvements on.
It's not clear why not. It's considered that it happened.
You didn't get a chance to type anything up, Kim. Okay, everybody on this broadcast has been here. Everybody who's online, everybody that has been here. Zach?
Yeah, so without saying addresses, we had the materials from council members on the payroll. Are these the addresses we're supposed to be considering? This speaks to the not knowing what we're doing.
I don't even know what them, Derek. I just, I didn't even know there was something there.
My concern as a council member is we don't know what addresses to be prepared to discuss. For example, if we're discussing the DPW facility, that property, a significant portion of it is not property that the city owns. Significant portion is owned by MDOT. We had, we built on their property and we got permission to use it. So if we're going to be saying, we're going to be doing improvements there related to fire facility, whether it's temporary or permanent, we ought to have had time to do that research, to have council check with MDOT to see if that's consistent with the terms of the easement we have with them. So we don't have the full information to take action on certain items because we haven't, we haven't received information on it before.